Need to call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Auburn School Committee is being conducted in person and is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person here at 5 West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability. See no citizens to comment unless Mr. Walton, you have any citizens comments? No. Teaching and learning? Moved down?
We'll do special recognition.
Oh, okay. Special recognitions.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair, but Chair for tonight. So a couple of recognitions this evening. First, we'd like to recognize our board member, Chloe Chang. She received the Worcester County Superintendent's Award recently. We had a lovely lunch at Holy Cross, and she was recognized with a bunch of definite overachievers from across Central Massachusetts, and she made Auburn very proud for some of the accomplishments that she's taken on. She also received a National Security Language Initiative for Youth Mandarin Scholarship, conducting research on consumer trends in banking with an NYU professor, and received a gold award from the Queens Commonwealth International Essay Competition. Chloe was also selected as a youth grant maker from Worcester County to allocate $25,000 in local nonprofits and has dedicated 148 hours to tutoring students from 32 different countries, ranking in the top 5% of the 14,000 tutors at schoolhouse.world. So we are proud to have her, proud of her accomplishments, and proud of all she's brought to Auburn High School. We'd also like to recognize this evening Christina Hawk. She was in MMEA Allstate. She performed at Symphony Hall with the MMEA Allstate Orchestra on Saturday, March 29th. She received the highest score in the state on timpani, a remarkable achievement. She also participated in the recent production of Pippin on the timpani, and a lot of the folks that play in the orchestra are, you know, professional musicians, and she hung in there with the rest of them. So that was great. And also, congratulations to the following student athletes for making the Telegram Super Team: Maeve Whitmore for field hockey, Zunai Molten for soccer, Braden Belanger for football, and they will all be honored at a ceremony in June.
Congratulations.
Yeah, lots to celebrate.
That's awesome. Should we approve the minutes first?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 2nd of 2025.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And no student representative report, correct?
Nope.
Alright. Teaching and learning?
Yeah, so I'll get the ball rolling and then turn it over to Mr. Walton. So the Department of Education undergo, undertakes monitoring of public school districts on a cycle. This year, we are under some significant monitoring reviews. So I'll talk a little bit about what you see up on the screen. In your packets, there's both PowerPoint as well as something that Greg is going to talk on, as well as the actual reports. I believe there's two reports in there that touch on what we're going to talk about tonight. But I just wanted to briefly mention the three different areas that we have undergone monitoring this year. The first is what Greg is going to talk about tonight, which is Integrated Monitoring Review. And there were specific standards that we'll get into. The second area we had that I'm going to be sharing with you at a future meeting is targeted and focused monitoring, which comes from the Office of Language Acquisition. That focuses on our English Language Education Program. And I'll touch on a couple of things tonight because they are included in this review. And the last thing that we have undergone this year is our federal grant programs monitoring, which is our Title 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A. Grants have all been under review. So I feel like, and I'm sure Greg, I know Greg feels this way as well, I feel like that's basically what we've been doing this year, is dealing with compliance issues. So what you see on the screen on the right-hand side and in your packets, that circle, that's the six-year cycle that every school district undergoes in terms of monitoring. There's years, there's six years broken up, and there's a Group A at the top and a Group B at the bottom. And so each district in years one through three goes through a Group A monitoring, and then Group B goes through as years four through six. And basically, years one and four, whatever cycle you're in, it's a self-assessment. So that's what Greg and Caitlin and I, to a very small degree, did last year. Years two and five of that cycle are onsite monitoring, and Greg's going to talk about what took place this year. That's what we're in presently. And then years three and six in that cycle are continuous monitoring, where you're providing any information on areas that you have to improve on to the Department of Education, sharing that with the community as well. So I'll go to the, can you go to the next slide, Greg? So I mentioned Groups A and Group B, and this is how the Department of Education divides it up. So Group A is highlighted in yellow because that's what we underwent this year. So it's universal standards around student identification, IEP development, programming, and support services, and equal opportunity. When we get into the next cycle, which would be years four through six, then we'll be looking at those universal standards which are on the right, which are professional development, community engagement, facilities, classrooms, oversight, time of learning, and equal access, as well as other things. So anyway, so Group A is where we were this year. And then I'll just briefly talk about the process, and then I'll turn it over to Greg to get into the weeds with you. So the process around this Integrated Monitoring Review is, it starts with discovery. So that's providing the folks at the Department of Education with documents. We undergo a data analysis and provide them a lot of information. They then come into the districts and review records, conduct interviews, observations. Those were with, well, again, Greg will get into that. And then the closeout portion of that is if there are any areas that need improvement, there's a corrective action plan, and there are a couple of areas that we'll touch on. And we have to submit progress reports to ensure that we, within one year, resolve anything that came up. As part of that process, there's something called pre-finding corrections. So those are areas that, minor issues that might come up, they might say, hey, this is something that we noticed, or we might say, oh my gosh, this is something that we do. And then the Department of Education is really good about approaching this not from a you're-in-trouble standpoint, but part of this is also improving our processes. And so pre-finding corrections are, if areas that can easily be corrected before issuance of the report, there's an opportunity to do so. So our process, Corey Steidman was the chairperson of the group. They were onsite February 10th through the 12th, and then we received the report April 10th. And we'll take it there, from there, Greg.
So part of the review and the report that you guys have in front of you is just standards. So if it's implemented, you know, you'll see that there, but for partially implemented and not implemented, it requires a corrective action plan. So like Alan talked about, prior to the onsite review, we had a self-assessment, and mine started actually earlier in June, where I had to submit three indicators. And then in October, I had to submit 13 policies to the Department of Education. So they looked at the policy, they send it back to me, they say they look fine, or here's what you're missing, you know, and you can correct them. We only had one correction, and that was with our suspension. And then our indicators, we'll go into the next slide. So indicators, so we had Indicator 11, 12, and 13, and the department looked at a specific date. So they looked at October 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2023. Indicator 11 is looking at the initial evaluations and reevaluate timelines. Indicator 12 is looking at students that are referred from EI to preschool for special education evaluations. And then Indicator 13 is looking at post-secondary goals for students and transition services. So we were compliant on indicators 12 and 11, and we were found noncompliant on Indicator 11 with a corrective action plan. But I do have an asterisk there, so. In December of 2023, our school psych resigned, so that was part of our evaluations. So we missed a couple, we didn't miss a couple, we missed the timelines. At the time, it was, they reviewed 29 files, 26 were compliant, three were not compliant. And the three students that were not compliant, they were actually in and out of the hospital at the same time, because we did contract with outside school psychs. The only problem with that is the school psychs would only complete the evaluations after school, so it was hard to get kids to stay after school to complete their evaluations. So part of the corrective action plan that I submitted was, we created a more robust list of school psychologists, or independent school psychologists for contracting, and we actually hired a school psychologist prior to the school year ended. So we were posted on every single site you can think of, until we found someone, and she was really awesome. So at the bottom, the statement, oh, so then when the department came onsite, they came back to look at if I actually followed the correction, corrective action plan, and then they looked at certain files to see if we met those requirements, and we did. So we were found compliant when they were onsite. I think you guys have this in your packets. It just gives you a little better view, so it tells you how many files were reviewed for the Indicator 11, you know, 29, 26 out of 29 we were compliant on, and three we were noncompliant. And those are the three students I talked about. For EI, it was only one file review, because during that time period, it was only one student referred for special education services. And then for transition, 35 out of 35 were compliant. So we were compliant in all our written policies and procedures. So out of 49 criterias, we were compliant on 47 of them. The only two that, and I'll get into this later, I kind of knew, and one of them we did know, which was the preschool ratios and the IEP timeline of getting the IEPs out to parents. So for preschool, the ratios are, if you have five or more students with disabilities in a classroom, the classroom cannot exceed 15 students. When we started the school year, we were compliant. But as the school year goes on, we evaluate students, students move in, and then sort of numbers increase. So going into this, we met with Corey, he knew about it. We asked, I asked questions, how can we correct this? And there's no right answer. A lot of districts do other things, like some districts will have just half-day programs, while we have half-day and full-day programs. Some districts will just have some separate classrooms, which I don't think is beneficial for students in preschool. But this was, this was our numbers. We had 17 students in a classroom, six with disabilities. And I think, sorry, the next one should say seven students with disabilities and 11 without disabilities, which was 18 students. So we weren't far off. The other one was getting IEPs out on time, and I talked to you guys earlier in the year about this. So when I first started in my role, we did a lot of paper copies, so we would print out the IEP. It would come to me, I would read it. If I had edits, I would make the edits, scan them back to the team chairs, come back to me. So now that we have DocuSign, I don't have to do any of that. The IEP comes straight to me, I can read it on my computer, I can make edits on my computer, and it sends it right back to the team chair, and then we can get them out faster. So this year, we've been getting them out the same week and getting them back sometimes the same day signed, if I sign it. So we already, I think, corrected that, but we still, like Alan said, we have to write a correction, corrective action plan, so that'll be part of that. And these are just the standards that we were cited on, which is SE18B, which is IEP timelines. And then the next one was inclusion of reprograms for students three and four years of age. And then this is Alan's part.
Yeah, so I mentioned earlier, we, the other piece of, so we had three major compliance reviews this year. So included in this, in this review, in the Special Education Integrated Monitoring Program, were the review of our English Language Education Program. So they started including those pieces in, because the Department of Ed wants to have everything kind of inclusive. So they use this phrase, which I don't love, but it's called prior noncompliance. And it was prior noncompliance because it was the report that came out in February of 2025, when they reviewed our English learner education program. So specifically, these areas, there were two areas that they included in this, and you'll see them in your packet. But the first is that identifying that English learners at the high school may miss an elective or class required for graduation due to scheduling conflicts with them getting their EL class, which is a really difficult thing, because they need to take that class. It's important that they're learning English, and so it's hard to identify, because everything at the high school, we, you know, is identified as a class that kids need to take. And so there's, this is also one of those kind of catch-22s, it's hard to identify how we get them that class without them missing something. So it's an ongoing conversation that we're having at the, at the high school level to figure out how we move forward, but that's, that is the CR13 on there.
I can just chime in too. Desi didn't have a good answer to how to solve the problem either, because they need the EL instruction, but it's, obviously, they're missing something else. I said, well, so how do places do it? They didn't, couldn't give us a good answer.
And I have an upcoming meeting with the people who conducted that review, which is why I haven't shared that review with you yet. They're still final, we're still finalizing our back and forth in what is called a Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan. So I'll be sharing that overall report, as well as our plan moving forward with you in an upcoming school committee meeting. So you'll see this again at that next meeting, but these two particular ones fall under this review and, or are included in this review. And then the second piece up there, CR18, is responsibilities of the school principal. In that specific one, they cite a curriculum, and that is something that we've been working on, is identifying a curriculum for our English learners, which is also kind of difficult, because our English learners are in a variety of areas. So having a firm curriculum is something that has been difficult to put a finger on. And the state also recognizes that. We have a lot of resources around math, English, science, and social studies, but having high-quality instructional materials in English learner education is, is an ongoing battle. So we are not unique in, in not having that curriculum. And the other piece, there's a couple of different pieces in here, but establishing personalized goals for attaining English proficiency. This year, we added the elevation program, which has been outstanding. Teachers, as well as English language educators, have been using that, but we're still getting that up and off the ground. And so every student who's an English language learner has a profile in elevation, which is linked to Power School, and teachers can go in and see that. But we're still in the kind of infancy stages of rolling that out and having, everybody having access to that. So those are those two particular pieces that I just wanted to mention, that are included in this, but aren't directly addressed through this process, but they included them in here because they fall under civil rights in those pieces.
To add to that, I don't know if they did put it in the report, but on the onsite visit, they did come to the schools that have quiet rooms. They interviewed the staff on the policies and procedures of using the quiet room and restraint, and we were compliant on all those also. And I think that's in the report somewhere. In the past, I think it was my second year here, when they did these reviews, they would interview a lot of people. They interviewed a team chair, they would interview teachers, they would interview the principals. This year, they interviewed CPAC and myself, and just the principals for those restraint and quiet rooms. So it was a little bit different this time around. So the next steps, correction, corrective action plan. So on Friday, Alan and I are meeting with Corey, and we have to sit down and figure out what are the next steps to develop the corrective action plan, what it needs to include, and when we need to submit it by. And there are steps as we go along that we have to meet by certain dates. Statement of assurance, so we have to commit to implementing the corrective action plan, and then we have to share this with all the stakeholders, the staff, advisory groups, and the general public. So we had our debrief with Corey, and I thought it was pretty good. So like I said, we were cited on two for special education. I think Alan was cited for two on equal rights, of civil rights, and I thought that was pretty good. So you see at the bottom, they were impressed that it was my first time, Alan's first time, and Caitlin's first time doing this review, because they thought everything was thorough. They gave Caitlin a compliment, because they felt that her files were very, very organized, and they were impressed of how the Special Education Department functioned, because they thought it would be a lot more of us, but they said that everything was intact. So I was impressed, and I gotta give Caitlin a shout-out. She did a lot of work. She had the files ready for them in their office, and they came in, they were able to go right to work. They were supposed to spend, spend four days, they only spent three, because everything was so organized, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
So for those areas that, like even Desi isn't sure how to fix, what's the plan there? Do we have one yet? We're just...
For me, because I had to submit some others for some other things, is you submit what you feel is the right process. So like preschool, Alan and I and Caitlin and Beth, we all look at the preschool ratios before the school year starts, and that's what we're going to submit, right? Like you would monitor it, but things change as you go, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this was in the preschool, it was a unique year. We haven't, we've encountered this problem before, but in already looking at people registering for next year, we feel like we're in a place where this isn't going to be an issue. But, you know, like, like we said, it is, you know, there, a lot of districts are in this situation who have programs like ours. And we had, I don't know, two or three different calls with people from Desi, Corey, as well as others, and there isn't, there isn't a good answer. In the past, you used to be able to, what's the word I'm looking for?
Apply for a waiver.
Okay.
Which I know that back with, when Rosemary Reedy was Director of People's Services, she did that in preschool, even though they denied that that could ever happen, but I know it happened.
Yeah.
Because what happens in preschool is, you take on students who, at three years old, who may have special needs, but you don't know who they are. You don't know who's out there, who's going to be turning three, who then you have to provide services to. So how do you plan for a number that you don't know what it is? Right? So we've always done that. You know, you always kept space. Sometimes the space worked out perfectly, and then this year, we were a little bit over. It doesn't mean that they're not getting the services that they need, because they still get the services they need. It is strictly about the number of kids, that ratio.
And as I was about to say, so then, like I said, mentioned earlier, some districts avoid that by having just half-days.
Just half-days.
Right, so we have the full days, but then the requirement is one teacher, one aide, but most of our classroom has one teacher, two ABAs, and IA. So we actually are over the aides portion, but it's the student portion they're looking at.
Yeah, and a lot of families benefit from that full-time. The kids probably do too.
Exactly.
Yeah. Through the chair, how has been the move to, like, digital IEPs? Has that really worked out well?
There's so much. Sometimes I will send an IP, so I click sign, and 20 seconds later, a parent will sign, and come right back to me.
I personally really liked it. I was curious how other parents thought. I think that, like, it's just quick.
We've had about five pairs that have requested hard copies. But besides that, everyone, they make it, you know?
Preparation and the work, the copies, the mailing, the getting it back, the follow-up, they didn't return it. It helps a lot.
Yes. When parents don't return, it was harder to track. Now in DocuSign, you can see that it's still open.
Yeah, and I, I think DocuSign is the way to go. It's just, I used to, the big packet of, like, compliance, like, here's a 20-page yellow paper that you get, and I'm like, this is a way.
Yeah.
Digital safeguards, yep.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Nicely done, and thanks to everyone for their work, because it is an enormous amount of preparation to have them come in and to get everything ahead of time. So they really did a great job. So I was happy to see that Desi gave them a little pat on the back, too, so.
What are you going to do with all your time now? That's good.
I can get out of there, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Greg.
Thanks for coming.
Onto Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So under unfinished business, just to give an update, we are moving forward. You know, we now have the support of Select Board and Finance related to the budget. That'll go to town meeting on May 6th, and we did land at the 3.81% increase. We have some work to do to figure out how some of this will play out. So far, there's still a lot of moving pieces, and there will continue to be, I think, till we get closer to the end of the school year. But I just wanted to thank the committee and the town leadership and community for the support that we've gotten with that. So we'll see what happens on town meeting floor. Just wanted to thank over, it says in the, in your packet, 400 families. We are now at 500 families, over 500 who have registered for bus transportation. So let's keep that going. I will put out another reminder before May 1st to let folks know that the deadline is coming and the price will increase at that point. So, but we're, we're off to a good start. So people are getting the hang of it, that we need this to happen earlier. So 500 is a good number at this point. Also, starting May 1st, our satellite and Galaxy registration will open up. We're already receiving calls for that. So May 1st, that will be live, and folks will be getting an email from me about that. So we are well into next year already. So all good stuff there. If we move on to new business, in your packet, you do have handbook updates for each of the schools, as we do each year. I don't know if folks had a chance to review all of them. I don't see them as having, in my review, any major changes. Now, there could be a major change when we get to the cell phone conversation, but I think for the purposes of what we're doing now, the only big thing, and this is an addition in your packet, it has some little, it's, at the top, it says student failing protocol. It should be at the back of the, it keeps, I think it keeps going, Brooke.
I think it's a separate.
Yeah, it's a separate, it's not staple. So that was something I had missed, that there was a link in the changes from the middle school. And this is a much more formalized process for any student who may be at the point or looking like they could potentially fail. And so what they're trying to do is formalize a process, so that teachers know what to do, that then there's a meeting with the student, the counselor, team, then there's a scheduled parent meeting if things continue, right? So it's kind of an escalation of getting folks involved to support the student in being successful in the class. So it includes, if you go to the very back page, you know, check in regularly, that we're monitoring attendance, there are weekly updates to parents, in that throughout the process, there's an evaluation, is what we're doing working to help the child be successful? If in two or three weeks it's not successful, it's, it's the whole idea of going back to, back to the drawing board to say, okay, so what do we do if this isn't working? So I did just add that in, so if the committee would choose, we can certainly move the vote for the student handbooks to the next meeting, to give everybody a chance to take a look. That is definitely the biggest change overall, I would say.
So I'm just seeing missing assignments. Do they, in all grades, allow missing assignments to be passed in after? Or is that just like a FYI, this is why the grade is where it's at?
I think for this case, this is why, this is why the grade is where it's at.
Okay.
For the purposes of this process. But I do think that there are plenty of times where they take missing assignments, and I suspect sometimes, but maybe they don't, right?
Right.
Where there might be a certain, certain project or thing that's like, nope, this is when it has to be done. But for this, it's really to say, because the missing assignments are contributing to the failure, so what are they?
Perfect.
Yeah, through the chair, I would also just like to add on, like, my high school experience. Most teachers are pretty, like, accommodating with the deadline, so they'll be able to, like, extend it, and sometimes if you're out, they'll put in, like, a placeholder zero to remind you that you need to submit it.
Oh, nice.
Right, and that's something too that families can see, particularly at the middle school level, right? So, but yeah, so it really is just about formalizing this, so that it doesn't get to the point of no return, right? That they don't get to the point that the student can't have success, even if there's a rough patch. That's the intent of this protocol, is to provide that support along the way. But we can certainly take some time to overlook over that if the committee chooses.
Through the chair, with the cell phone, that is the hot topic for the handbook, is this, is the committee going to have results so that we can just do it all at once? Do you know what I mean?
Well, so I honestly am not sure. So, so that's the reason for bringing the majority of these forward now, and we may have to do a revision with an addition or a change down the road, specifically around cell phones or smartwatches. But I don't know. So we're going to talk in a few minutes about the surveys themselves, when they're going to go out. We have a date to look at the data, to see what the data tells us, the committee does, the cell phone committee does, and then to make recommendations to you. Now, if timing all works out, right, we hope we can have that by the end of the year. I just can't commit to that yet, because I don't know what the data's going to show us. I don't know what's going to come out of the cell phone committee for a recommendation. It may be just to kind of stay the course, which then wouldn't require big changes. I don't know.
Could we just, would it be, is it a big thing to just hold off and just vote on the handbook at the end of the year, since the handbook is for next year, anyway, right?
Sure, we, I think we can do that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I know how difficult it is to send a really large document of policies for students, and then go, oh, by the way, we also have this.
Yeah, and I don't know that they would be really sending these out yet, but it would allow them to kind of formalize their changes in their handbooks, and then if there was just the one more change with the cell phone, that could be added in later, you know? So to get these approved now lets them at least get that document fully prepared.
Oh, okay.
And then just add in that one thing.
Because these, I don't think they go out till the, I mean, I don't remember even signing these before the beginning of the year.
No, no. I think the thing is... I think the thing is, sometimes if we have a new student who comes in, right? Like even at the beginning of the summer and they register, then if they meet with the, sometimes things work out, it's nice to be able to have it, even if there were a change further down. But up to the committee, we can wait. I don't know if we'll have the June 18th meeting, we often don't have that one. So that would mean, after this, we have town meeting, we have May 21st and June 7th, maybe? 6th?
Through the chair, I completely get what you're saying, we were kind of talking about beforehand. But as we're listening, I'm kind of counting down, and I'm going, oh, we only have so many meetings left.
There's only a few, yeah.
I'm thinking that could get pretty tight. So I kind of see where we should vote on this handbook now.
It at least lets the schools get their wheels rolling to make sure that what they want for changes are in there. And then if it's this one more thing that's gotta go, it's not a huge deal. It wouldn't be a, you know?
Yeah.
We've had to do that where there's been a minor change or something here and there, so.
Through the chair, it's fairly large working document. So I think it would be better to, I see your point. But I also think it's gonna be, it will be a lot for them to do it at one time, to get it out in time.
Yeah.
And then I really like the student failing protocol. I think it's really thorough, I think it's encouraging teachers to really like home contact. I think that's really important. A lot of times you have, like you have kids that are failing, you're not contacting home. And then, like, parents may not understand the school G or Power Score, how to even look at it. I've had some parents say to me, I don't even know how to get on. I'm like, okay, let me show you. But I like that it's really, it's really doing like a, kind of a behavior plan. So we can, you know, everyone's on board, everyone knows, like, this is why Johnny is failing. Johnny is failing because he's missing 10 assignments, and, and he's not, and he needs more time. And then maybe out of this might come like Johnny needs a little more extra help, like where can we? Or maybe Johnny needs to get evaluated, like this, I think this would be a really wonderful tool, very thorough. I think it's great.
Yeah.
I agree.
I just had a couple of questions on the policies. On the K E T A 2 student handbook, I just see the exclamation point at the end, and an adult must be outside waiting at the bus stop. If they want the exclamation point, I'm fine with it, but I just note sometimes that institute's like yelling. I don't know if that's too nitpicky, but either way is fine. My only question, oh, and dress code, that's just adding a little more teeth to the dress code, right?
Yeah, that was not a big change.
Okay, yeah, that was all I had. It looks great, thank you for your hard work.
Is it the will to vote tonight, or to move it to the next meeting, or to wait till the last meeting?
Voting. Through the chair, I'm comfortable with voting on it tonight.
Same, same.
All right, I will motion to approve the updates to the student handbooks as presented for the 2025-2026 school year.
I'll second.
I need a first, sorry, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make that motion to approve the updates to the school handbooks as presented for the 2025-2026 school year.
Forgot the entertain word, sorry.
Your turn, go ahead.
I thought it was interesting, I second.
There it is.
It was interesting you said I'm on.
I thought you said too, that's why I paused.
It is exactly what I said. All in favor?
Second, aye. Very confused today.
I don't know where my brain is.
The next item in your packet, you'll find the surveys that have been created for distribution to families, students and teachers regarding cellphones in our schools. If you have any changes that you'd like to make, the committee, the cellphone committee would like to distribute them following April vacation, so on that Monday. So if there's any discussion, I will tell you, I was telling Dr. McCrillis, we have a terrific committee. We have parents, we have teachers, we have administrators, and we have, now have three, we're up to three students from the high school that have joined us. And so what we've ended with compared to what we started with are exponentially better. There was thought given, there's one particular question, you know, that kind of goes across each of the, each of the surveys. I think it might be, double number now, number six, how do you think the use of cellphones impacts student learning? It improves, it has no impact, or it negatively impacts? We have a similar question on each, on the other two. But there was a lot of thoughtful consideration to make sure that what we, what we, that we didn't sway the results by how the questions were worded, right?
I have just, through the chair, I have to say, it was pretty amazing to see what people were coming up with to go around these questions, it was all, it was really awesome.
It was a very thoughtful meeting, with a lot of people chiming in and challenging one another a little bit, like, no, I don't think I agree with that, I think it should be this, even though respectfully so, you know?
Yeah.
You're correct, it was very respectful, because everyone had their own opinions. Well, you could tell everyone wanted to get to a resolution that would benefit everyone, which was really, it was really nice to see.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if you want to take a minute to kind of read through some of the questions, or if you have any feedback? You know, the thing with creating any survey is they're never perfect. You know, sometimes at the end you go, ah, we should have asked something this way. But at this point, the number of folks that have looked at it and kind of teased through it, I think we're at a, at a pretty good place. So the intent is the middle school is gonna do it during one of their flex blocks when we return from the break. High school's going to do it during community time, so that we're not just sending it out and see who, they're gonna actually be asked to fill it out, so we should get a good response. Teachers will go out right when we get back, they'll get some time during the day to do that. And families, I think I'm gonna give them probably two weeks. And a few pokes along the way to get some feedback from families, so. I'm very curious.
I am too.
Really curious with what's gonna come back.
Through the chair, is this going out through that parent square, what is it called?
Yeah, we'll send out, we'll send the link through parent square, yes.
Through the chair, if I could say, it was, it's really nice to see that the survey for the students and to have their voice heard in this, I think it's really, really nice.
Through the chair, can we just, through the chair.
It's me tonight, sorry.
Can we just stress to the students that it is gonna be anonymous? I always worry with surveys that kids are like, well, I'm not gonna say this because then.
Yeah, and I think they'll probably know, because you know, I know, when I sign in, right? On a Google form, right off the bat, it says collecting your email, or is this your email, or fill in your email, and there's, there's going to be none of that, so.
Great.
I did limit the students to one response, however, so. I'm glad I caught that. That could have been a problem, yeah.
Through the chair, I have just two questions, one on, this is the parent, the family's cellphone use.
Yep.
On 16, that underlined blue, that's a link, so we can see the current school policy?
Yes.
Okay, and then question four, maybe it's just that it's, I don't know, over past 6:30 and my brain's not working. I don't understand the question, what is the primary reason for supporting cellphone use in schools? Like, is that, what's confusing me about that question is, are we, like, is, I see, I love what Auburn public, I love what Auburn Middle does. My daughter knows that when she walks in the building, that phone is off, in her bag, away. So I don't, I support her having it on the bus because I need to know where she is, and I like knowing that, where she is.
Yep.
So, but that doesn't feel like that's that, what that question is asking, so I'm confused by that question.
Okay. So to me, what you're saying, I think your answer would be, I don't support cellphone use in schools.
Okay.
Right, but I think I'll, I'll look at that, because I, I don't want it to be confusing.
Yeah, like, I, I was like, maybe I should answer that for safety.
So maybe it should be, if you support cellphone use.
For?
In schools.
Yeah, if you support cellphone use in schools, maybe, because I personally, like, I don't want her to have it in school. If I need to reach her, like, there's other ways, I can call the office, so on and so forth. That's, that was my, that was my, it's, it's weirdly questioned for me, I think.
I think as long as you put, if you support, and then do the question, I think that will clear it up.
And through the chair, I want to say, well, we discussed this, we discussed this question at length, actually. And I have to say, I didn't say much in that meeting, because it was really important for me to hear the, the teachers and the parents. And they all really kind of came up with the fact that it was really interesting to hear where the concerns lined, like for the teachers and then for the parents. And so I, I guess maybe because I sat in that meeting, I understand the question. Because a lot of the parents, there was a concern regarding emergency situations and things like that. And I do think the majority of those were high school students.
Yeah, but like, in my mind, excuse me, through the chair, if there's an emergency situation, I'm assuming my daughter will pull the phone out of her bag and turn it on, but I don't support her having it on during the day. So to me, I was just confused, I think if you support it.
Mm-hmm, and then likewise, I think then the next question changes to say, if you oppose cellphone use in schools, what is your primary reason for opposing that?
I think if you qualify it through the chair, that's, that it's clear cut, you know, yes, I support, no, I do not.
Yep.
So like, I, I mean, if my daughter called me in the middle of the school day, I'd be like, shut off your phone and go to the office. But maybe that's just the teacher in me. Just shut it off and go to the office.
Because we do ask that question. If you, number 15, if your child did not have a cellphone in school, do you know the best way to communicate with them, with them during the school day? Because we have so many families that communicate with their child during the school day. That happens regularly. Whether they're in, you know, they don't know if they're in class or in the hallway or whatever, and they're communicating with kids, and that's, so, and, and we wondered in the course of this committee, was it because they don't know how to get a message to their child?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna say a little P S A, call the office, they know where your child is.
They do.
You do not need to text them in the middle of class.
Through the chair, we discussed that as well. And it was like, are we going to overwhelm the secretaries?
No.
With these phone calls? Well, you got to remember high school.
Oh, yeah.
These kids are in sports, they're taking driving lessons, there's a million things that take up their day. And when you have a house with two working parents, and you're trying to get ahold of your child to find out, is practice canceled, are they having it, you know what I mean? Those phone calls are starting to come in. Are we then overwhelming that and that? You gotta think it's not just that phone call now, they gotta find the student, they have to relay the message to the student. There's a lot of factors that kind of come into place, you know, when you hit that high school level.
And we work in middle school, so I'm just talking about middle school. You should have your parents, you should have your phones off and away in middle school.
Good points, though.
Through the chair, so for question 15, you were talking.
On which survey?
Oh, sorry. The family cellphone use, when you were talking about that question earlier. When it asked, do you know the best way to communicate with them during the school day if necessary? I feel like that question kind of implies like, what is like the best way? And maybe instead you could free word it, like, is there a better way to communicate with them without a cellphone? Because it was like a bit confusing.
Okay.
If your child does, did not have a cellphone, okay.
Yeah.
I had to read it again, got it.
If your child does not have a cellphone in school, so how would the question read?
Because right now, it's asking like, do you know if there's like a good way to communicate with them? Is that like what you're trying to get across?
I'm trying to get across, if the, if their child doesn't have a cellphone and they need to get them a message, how do they, do they know how to do that?
Oh, okay.
That's the way I read it.
Oh, okay, I get it now.
Yeah, because, because that seemingly, some of the people in the group said, they believe that parents are going to want kids to have cellphones in school, because otherwise they don't know how to communicate them, with them when they're in school.
Maybe like, do you know if there are other methods to communicate with them? I think that would make it more clear.
Or do you, I think what she's trying to find out is if the parent knows the number to the school.
Oh.
Like, I don't know if they know, they can just call, or they can also email, like.
Obviously, they can email the students.
Plenty of emails from people, whether it's a teacher, or it's the principal, or it's the secretaries.
The child.
Students themselves.
Yeah, the child.
Through the chair, the old principal at Packerchog Elementary had a wonderful intro day for all of the kindergartners. And she posted a big thing, and everybody could take a picture of it and save it to their cellphone.
I think I still have that on my cellphone. Do I contact her daily?
Little type A over there at Packerchog.
I don't know if you, if you knew the, the previous principal, but that was very helpful. So now the phone, phone number's in my phone, so I can answer that question with, yes, I do.
And I, I see 15 more for high school kids, because like, my kids do have cellphones at school, but I'm not contacting them that way in middle school because it's off.
Right.
But I see Chloe's point with that, yeah. Having said that, I also really want to get this up tonight, so I'd like to get this approved tonight.
I think those, through the chair, those two little small changes, just to, just to clear them up, of I approve, I oppose.
Yep.
Those two questions, I think the rest of it looks really good.
It's awesome.
There's no middling, you know what I mean? So it's not like, there, there's no neutral.
Right.
Thing, it's either yes, you do, no, you don't, it's a policy, it's not. And then I do like, how many, is there a character limit on the questions that you can like type in?
It's a long paragraph, we put it in for a paragraph, not a short answer, so you can type quite a bit in there.
Yeah, so as long as they can, you know, have like 250 characters, God bless you all. I think it, I think they all look great.
Sorry, through the, on the middle and high school, what are the current rules regarding cellphone at your school? Is there one about different classes? Because I'm wondering if we should have, you know, phones are allowed in certain classes and not others? As a, as a choice? Be good to know.
I think that makes it, through the chair, I think that makes it very complicated, because middle school, they don't have their cellphones.
Yeah.
At a, at a high school level.
But it gives them the choice, though, phones are off and away in the backpacks. So that middle school option is there, is what they should pick. But that is an, that is a challenge at the high school. That in some classes they're allowed and in some they're not.
Through the chair, I remember when they came in to talk about their media footprint.
Yeah.
And that's still, like, you know, like gets me, you know what I mean? So I think, I think this is gonna be fabulous.
We'll see. I would love to get my hands on some data. I'm very, very curious.
All right, can I entertain a motion to approve or amend the cellphone use survey with those minor edits?
I'll make a motion to amend the cellphone use surveys as noted for just, with the two small edits as noted for distribution.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. The next item is a quick one. So normally, we do have a meeting scheduled prior to the annual town meeting, which this year is on May 6th. And we just need to, we normally take a vote this time of year as to whether or not we'll need the meeting. I don't believe that we will at this time, we have a heavy agenda this time, we'll, our next meeting will be May 21st. So that's up to the committee as to whether or not we hold, and usually it's a short one, it's usually, you know, a half hour kind of thing. But if, if we need it.
Yeah, my only thought is if we don't have it, I'd just encourage us to go to the meeting, since our budget is on the agenda for the meeting.
And that's May 6th, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
At the high school. Through the chair, I don't think it's, we need to have them. And I'll be at the, I'll be at the town meeting.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Brooke to be our person for school committee at that meeting. Make a motion.
I'll make a mo, I'll recommend a motion to not hold.
Entertain.
Entertain.
I will make a motion to not hold a school committee meeting prior to the annual town meeting on May 6th.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Through the chair, that meeting is at 6 o'clock, correct?
Yes.
All right, it's on my calendar.
Six or 6:30. So, Dana, can you, do you have it?
Hasn't been put on our calendars yet.
Okay.
Oh. So I apologize, but I would say it's 6:30 because it was, the school committee meeting was scheduled for 5:30 to 6:30.
Okay.
So I, I think it's 6:30.
It is 6:30. Miss Mandy said it was 6:30.
There we go.
Great. So that she's.
The birdie told us.
All right, the next, the next item, our school committee dates for 2025-2026. So there's a list in your packet, it is very similar to what we did this year. Mandy did a great job, I think, trying to be cautious of holidays and those kind of things, that we don't step on any of that. We also, this year, we're looking at the M A S C conference that's held in November, so that's November 12th. So we worked around that, we had to change the, a date last year, this, for this year because of that. So hopefully, we've avoided some of those. Um, so hopefully we've avoided some of those pitfalls. Uh, so normally at this time of year, we do, uh, approve those meeting dates.
I'll entertain a motion to approve school committee meeting dates.
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting dates as proposed by the superintendent.
And I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So the next item nearly slipped by my radar, but you do have to evaluate me this school year. So I am going to take, uh, you each have a yellow envelope, uh, with information in it. So I'm just gonna pull out, um, Mrs. Harrington so I can go through what's in there because I don't have one. Uh, what's included in the packet is first, the indicator rubric for superintendent evaluation. So that's the rubric from DESI upon which you can, um, you look to provide my ratings for. The next item are, uh, is an update on my performance goals. So you'll see in yellow on that form, there's a January twenty twenty-five update and an April twenty twenty-five update, as I normally do each year. So that's just providing you with information and evidence related to the goals that I set for myself, which are, those are also on the form. Uh, the next item, it says Dr. Chamberlain's examples of evidence for the evaluation. So these relate more to the overall rubric, so they're, they're categorized by the rubric, uh, that's used to, uh, rate my performance. So there's a list of items there. And then you should have an end of cycle summative evaluation report with your name on it up at the top. Uh, and so that's the form that you fill out based on your, um, opinion, based on the evidence of what you, how you feel I performed this school year. You do have to first in step one assess progress toward goals. So again, you have the evidence toward the goals, so you assess the progress there. And then you provide a rating on each of the standards and you can provide some, uh, comments. Um, I think this evening, the, the reason for this is we need to set kind of a timeline because we are running short at getting to the end of the year. Uh, timeline for when your information needs to go to Chairperson Harrington for her to compile it into one, uh, summative evaluation. So we don't have, we have, uh, the town meeting on May sixth, so our actual next meeting is not until May twenty first. So I, I'm hopeful that maybe this could, we could wrap up the evaluation at the May twenty first meeting, which would mean, I think by, we talked about maybe May ninth.
May ninth, yeah.
Which is a Friday for you to have your information to Chairperson Harrington. So that then that gives her some time before the actual meeting to compile the results to be presented at that meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, May ninth. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to complete the superintendent's evaluation process in accordance with the timeline discussed. May ninth to Chairperson Harrington and then May twenty first to discuss at the meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Turn on the motion. Thank you.
That's why I let you do it.
And if along the way, if anyone has any questions about anything you received in their packet, you can feel free to, uh, to reach out and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Uh, the next item, United States Department of Education request and DESI response. So a couple of weeks ago, we received information from the state that they had received, um, communication from the federal government saying that each state, well, the state of Massachusetts, I don't know each state, the state of Massachusetts had to certify that we were in compliance with Title Six. Title Six addresses discrimination based on, you know, the variety of race, um, color, those kind of things. Um, and then along with that, there was a kind of an addendum to that about, um, certifying that we do not use any funding for anything related to diversity, equity, or inclusion. And by signing the form that was sent to the state by the federal government, the state was assuring that no LEA, Local Educational Association, like we are, they were assuring on our behalf that we were doing the same, so that we were following Title Six and that there were no DEI initiatives. Um, so other states have received this. Um, Massachusetts, of course, being the state that it was, took this very seriously and, um, worked with the Attorney General to craft a response. Massachusetts has selected to not sign this form, to not comply with the form that was sent. They did send a letter, which is in your packet. It comes from interim Commissioner Tutwiler. So in your packet, you have the notification from USDOE that what they were doing, then the actual form that they asked us to, asked Massachusetts to sign. And then at the top, it says DESI, it says, um, USDOE to whom it may concern. That's from interim, uh, Commissioner Patrick Tutwiler. And what he states in the letter is that we do comply with Title Six. We always have. Complying with Title Six is, um, required in order to receive Title One funding. So it goes without saying, we have to sign off on all kind of, um, agreements when you receive federal funding as such, and we all do that. So in the letter, it says, yes, we do comply with Title Six. We're not signing the form. There you have it. What does this mean long term? Nobody knows. Um, it could, because in the, you'll see in one of the forms, it definitely cites, you know, that this is contingent upon your federal funding. So if we were to lose our federal funding because of this, um, we would lose about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, between the money that goes for special education and our Title One, Title Two A, Title Three, and Title Four money, uh, that we get each year. Um, those are entitlement grants. Those are grants that we don't have to apply for each year. It's based on our enrollment and demographics and, uh, poverty level and all of those things. That's how the federal government has always determined those. So, um, the deadline to submit the form to the federal government was April twenty fourth. So we've not even gotten to that deadline yet. Um, but I think right now it's a wait and see, uh, for what happens. And and who knows? We may never hear another word. Or we may find out that our, uh, that we're not going to be, as a state, gonna receive this federal funding and that's another. I like, the state of Massachusetts as a whole receives two billion dollars every year in this federal funding. Like, that's no joke. That's not, and for us, a million dollars is no joke. That's, um, you know, you think of the hit that we took with having to make the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar cut a few weeks ago. Um, I don't know what a million dollars does. So in my mind, I can't even wrap my head around it to say, you know, is there a plan? What would that plan be? What would that even look like for kids? I, I don't, I honestly don't have an answer for you. I know there's been, there's a ton of communications between the Superintendent's Association and the Department of Ed. Everyone is in this same boat right now. No one quite knows what this means for us. Um, but I will tell you that I agree with the decision to not sign that form. I will say that. And that's, that's my personal opinion. I do not speak for the committee or really for the district in that regard. But I appreciate the fact that the folks at these upper levels in the state of Massachusetts, um, took the stand that they did because it was asking us to do some things that, um, would be very hard for me personally to swallow, so.
And through the chair, I apologize for that decision.
As do I.
As do I. Well, we'll see what happens. Nobody, you know, to me, th- there's nothing to joke about or nothing to play with when it comes to kids' education and with hurting kids. And I believe that if we lose that funding, we are intentionally and purposely hurting kids, and I just can't make sense of that. I can't make sense of it.
And through the chair, when I read through, when that came to my attention and I read through it, and I was happy to see that you were in agreement that the beginning was all about Title Six. And I'm reading this and I'm like, okay, this isn't bad, this isn't bad, this isn't bad. And then I hit the, the last page and I was like, oh, no. Like, so it is, it is. I'm glad that Massachusetts has decided to send this letter, and I think that we need to, what's best for kids is not signing that.
Agree.
So time will tell, right? Time will tell. We're, I think we're in uncharted territory, but I feel like it's important for you to know. And now that I've, I've shared this with all of you, I am going to send the same documents on to town leadership. Um, because they should be aware as well that there's a potential for that to happen.
Absolutely. All right.
All right. Next, quickly, returning student registration. That's also, um, on here. It says it's gonna go before April vacation. Everyone has advised me, don't send anything before April vacation. After April vacation. Um, and so that will be coming, again, a very familiar process. Well, a process becoming more and more familiar for our families, so that's a good thing. So that will go soon as well. And that's all I have.
All right. Um, business and financials, our favorite part of the night.
All right, well, thank you. In your packet, we will start with an updated site manager job description. We have updated it, who supervises our buildings, uh, so site managers supervise our buildings and fields when they're in use. So this is kind of going hand in hand with our facilities usage and streamlining the process and ensuring that everything is up to date. So this, um, job description had not been updated since, um, twenty ten. So most of it is very similar. One of the things that has been added is that the business manager would also oversee it as well, um, to ensure.
Some additional oversight.
Additional oversight.
I think the one thing that came out was this, it was something about punching a clock.
Oh, yeah.
That we don't do anymore. So we, we took out the, the punching the clock. But for the most part, it's the same.
Right, and to ensure that it incorporates all of the things for both, for multiple buildings. Some of the things were very specific just to Auburn High School, but we have site managers that go into Auburn Middle School quite a bit as well. So, um, I'm asking for your approval so that we could actually post for some more site managers to support our facilities usage.
I'll entertain that motion.
Uh, through the chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah. So this is, um, just additional jobs. Let's say there's a teacher in the middle school and says, oh, I can do this, or this is a different job. This is in a, this is like a with her job, his or her job, or this is not. Like, this is a whole different person.
This is a whole different position. We have people that work as, during the school day for our schools, but also will pick up the positions at night when, you know, the community comes in to use our, um, gym for practices.
Okay.
So then this is a whole separate position.
Outside the school day.
Outside of the school day.
Outside of the school. I was just, I'm just trying to like, when you're at Swiss using the gym, the site person is right there. You can ask them any questions, like where the bathroom is.
Correct.
When you're at the middle school, you have no idea who that is. The sign, the door that's open so the people can use the bathroom is not marked. And then, I don't know what it is at the high school. I haven't been at the high school for anything, but I just, I didn't know if that was a person that was gonna be easily identified, that had to be there, or this was just.
Are you talking for outside sports?
This is, no, no, so like, yeah, for like the town youth sports, any of them, basketball, soccer, football.
If it's a regular like, and so this.
This is outside of the school day. This is Saturday morning or Sunday or Monday night.
But if they, so if it's just out on the fields and they're not accessing restrooms or anything like that, which sometimes that's the case, we won't have a site manager there for that. So that was some part of the conversation with the fee schedule, like when a site manager really needed to be there.
Right.
So certainly, if you're inside the middle school using a gym, it, someone should be easily recognizable.
Right.
If there's an issue, for sure. Somebody spills Gatorade someplace or, you know.
And they are, they're always right there.
Through the chair, they're right when you walk in the door.
Right. When you're using the gym for basketball that is in a gym. Um, there, I was here on Monday. And I knew the door was open because someone told me that the door was open so that we could use the bathroom for the kids that were using the field. But I was one of two people and you had all of U eight, U ten, and U twelve soccer on that field with the revolution from five fifteen.
That's something we have to follow up on because that door probably shouldn't have been open.
So that's what I was thinking, but then other people were like, well, why don't we have facilities if you're having these little kids? And I was like, I don't know why you're yelling at me. I just said that that door was open and.
So, so the thought with the fee schedule, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, when they're doing practices outside, so like soccer or whatnot, during the week, they're not gonna have the bathrooms and stuff because that would cost the site manager and then that would be a, a lot of cost on our, um, leagues. Whereas, um, like indoor basketball, they're in the school. Um, so there would be a site manager who's usually seen. On the weekends, you know, you have a lot more, um.
Game days. Like what you would call game days for those.
Right.
Where you have people coming to spectators. Then that would be different. There should be a door open someplace for a restroom. But we're not doing it across the board, and that was somewhat of an agreement with the teams as well. Um, because they don't want to pay for a site manager then either.
And just, um, through the chair, along with this, what we're trying to do is we're also looking to build our pool of site managers because there's been times that, you know, we haven't been able to get site managers and sometimes then we would have to cancel something or whatnot. But also, um, I am working to have a, uh, refresher course or training, I should say, with all of the site managers that we currently have to review all of the expectations. And then, um, we will do a training with all of, if any site managers come on board that we do to discuss. You need to be visible. You know, you were the person to, to support the families and whatnot and what, the do's and don'ts.
Okay. So this person is overseeing the people, like, for instance, basketball that are, that you can definitely see that's here. This person is overseeing those people.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
I was just trying to figure out where we are in the.
Nope.
Absolutely.
Through the chair, I know that in previous years when we used to, when we did play soccer over here, um, I always assumed the building was closed, even on Saturdays. So if we had to use the bathroom, I took a walk over to, you know, Duncan. So, I mean, I just assumed the bathroom was closed. I never even knew the bathrooms were open, so.
Not supposed to be during the week.
Yeah, and well, even on weekends, I just assumed they were closed. And so you have to go to the bathroom? All right, well, go to the bathroom. You know, so I just always assumed, so I just never.
And it all depends on whether or not we were able to
Yeah, yeah.
get a site manager as well, because sometimes we're, we're not able to. So we want to increase that pool. We want to retrain those that are there. Re, and, and really be able to support our community and our community events, but also, um, ensure the safety of our attendees and also, you know, watching over the buildings and everything as well.
Do have one more question. At the middle school, from my understanding, I've actually never, I've never accessed them, but is there a set of bathrooms that where you can lock the rest of the school, the rest of the school? I don't think so. Okay, someone, someone told me that and I was like, well, then leave those open and then, you think there is?
There isn't on the backside of the building?
When they're outside, yes.
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 Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, when you're outside on the fields and that is game day, you're supposed to have a site manager. It is my understanding, now, again, trying to streamline this, trying to retrain everybody, um, that there is built, there are bathrooms that can be opened that do not access the building.
There is outside, yes.
Yeah, so I think like.
But that's what it was. It was a random door on the side of the, like in the back of the, the middle school building. And I was like, oh, that's open. I, I am with.
That would be restrooms that should be opened, but it does not have access to the building.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so like that, that to me is less scary than the building being randomly open.
No, 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 it's not. No, no, no.
You know, like whoops, that bad, that door shouldn't have been open, but if it's just two restrooms.
It's restrooms for
Yes.
the use of the facilities.
To me, that's a little bit safer than.
That does not have building access.
Okay, no, yeah. That makes me happy.
Yep.
Great. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the updated, updated site manager job description as proposed by the business manager.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then next, I have before you a policy, um, a school committee policy that was updated in two thousand nineteen. Um, however, one of the things that we noticed was missing is that when we do a reimbursement for travel, um, it is aligned with the Internal Revenue Service standard mileage rate, which typically changes every January. So I am looking to, this is your first reading of the policy. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Capital improvements.
All right, so in your packet, you will find an updated CIP budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. We were unable to repurpose the Bryn Mawr building rehabilitation funding for the purchase of our new K to eight math curriculum. So this requires your vote of approval to be sent to the town, returning the requested funds to the Bryn Mawr building rehabilitation.
We had shared this at the last meeting, the seventy-five thousand dollars that now we're gonna put off for a year. So that's what, it's just correcting this document.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll enter, oh. I'll make a motion to approve the amended capital improvement budget for FY twenty twenty-five as presented by the business manager.
We are having a day today.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote.
And then finally, I have provided you with a year-to-date budget report for the FY twenty-five school year dated April.